Like to call the Tuesday, March 11th, 2025, City Council Discussion Only Meeting to Order. Could we have the roll call, please?
Councilmember Altman.
Here.
Councilmember Meadows.
Here.
Councilmember Watson. Mayor Protem Singh.
Here.
Mayor Brook over.
Here. Could we have a motion for approval of the agenda?
So moved, second.
Moved by Meadows, second by Altman. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
The agenda is approved unanimously. Any communications from the audience? Seeing none? Anything? Anybody in the queue?
No callers in the queue.
Okay, thank you. Communication from council members. Dr. Altman.
No report, Mayor, tonight, thank you.
Okay. Ms. Singh.
None for me.
Okay, Mr. Meadows?
Just briefly, you know, six days from now is St. Patrick's Day. A very busy night in East Lansing. I just urge everybody to stay safe and stay out of trouble.
Okay, Ms. Watson? Are you?
No, thank you.
Okay, thank you. I have nothing. Mr. City Manager?
I have a couple items. First item is to announce the spring 2025 dialogue has been mailed and is out. So there's some good articles in there on the Charter Review Committee and Stormwater Management. So I encourage everybody to take a look at it. Second item is an update on the Police Chief search. So the marketing recruitment and outreach continues. Search was launched on February 20th of this year. Eleven applications to date. The initial review will occur on March 20th. Community survey responses totaled 205. Survey closed on March 5th. So thank you for those that participated in that survey to help inform the selection of the next Police Chief for the City of East Lansing. Thank you.
Okay, we have a discussion agenda tonight. We have four items on the discussion agenda. The first item is 6.1. Continuation of discussion on City Council 2024 and 2025 Strategic Priorities Six Month Status Update. Mr. Bellman.
Thank you. The slides are up. So this is part two of providing City Council with an update on its 2024-2025 strategic priorities. Part one occurred at the February 11th, 2025 Discussion Only Meeting. So this is to cover the final five of the 10 strategic priorities approved by council last year. Goal six is to strengthen the city's financial health by reducing its unfunded pension and retiree healthcare liabilities by at least 20% and encourage expansion of its revenues. So there were five action items under this. Action item A was establishing a financial health review team for best practices in pension and other post-employment benefits, financing current pension and retiree healthcare benefits, and revenue enhancement. So this, for Progress Report Two, is 5% complete. Now that we have Audrey Kincaid as our Chief Financial Officer, and in light of the loss of the franchise fee revenue and other financial challenges, we'll be moving forward to identify a potential city residents that can serve on this health review team and provide insight to the City Council and to staff on how to continue to operate within our resources and to address those pension obligations. So under the MERS retirement pensions, our annual actuarial valuation report as of 12/31/2023 indicated that we were 67% funded, which was a 4% increase over 2022. The high of our pension was in 2009 at 68% funded, and the low was in 2019 at 52% funded. So we're going in the right direction, albeit slow. And I just want to emphasize it's important that we maintain our annual required contribution and that any excess that we do, we set aside in a general reserve so not to reduce our annual required contribution so that we can gain ground on addressing the unfunded liability. On the other post-employment benefits, which is primarily retiree healthcare, under GASB statement number 75 as of 12/31/22, our funding ratio was 55.56%. And the 12/31/23 was an interim year report. That put us at 64.51%, or an 8.95% increase in that funding. Our low was back in 2010 at 8.2. Our high was in '23 with 64.51. So average above 4.33% increase each year. So we're going in the right direction on that one. And so both of them are front and center. And as we go through each budget year, we're making sure that we're meeting the annual required contribution and looking at ways of making additional contributions to reduce the unfunded liabilities. Under action item B, which is update economic development incentives and other economic development programming with a focus on small businesses and marginalized population, for Progress Report Two, we're at 15%. So a couple examples that were provided is the pilot ordinance City Council approved for PK Companies for the Affordable Housing Project at 333 Valley Court, which is known as Emerald Point. If you recall at your meeting last week, you approved a letter of support for them to pursue the 9% LITEC, which is the low-income tax credit through the state, which they're submitting for reconsideration on April 1st, hoping to have an answer in June. Also in this category is the effort of the DDA to look at strategic priorities with housing and business support, the DMV through their programs, Albert Alfresco, Brownfield Authority looking at, I mean, forming the partnership with Kansas State University to conduct an inventory of all city's Brownfield properties. And of course, the LDFA Smart Zone Tech, creating the incubator downtown for tech companies. Action item C is prioritize and support specific development and redevelopment opportunities, including city-owned priority sites and underutilized, belated, and/or environmentally contaminated sites. For Progress Report Two, it's 20% complete. Again, it's the work we're doing with Kansas State University's technical assistance for Brownfield program to complete that inventory, not only in the DDA but throughout the entire city. DDA also engaged to Vills Inc. to market the Evergreen properties. And of course, the continued conversation around art space and whether that can be, how that can proceed and evaluate how the City of East Lansing could potentially financially and otherwise support art space as a project. Next slide. Action item D is engage Maximus to update the city's cost allocation plan for PR2. It's 50% complete. We contracted with Maximus on October 1st of '24. We, they were reviewing and updating the cost allocation plan and meeting with departments during that quarter. Action item E was to continue to improve income tax process and collection efforts. So for this Progress Report period, it was 65% complete. New city income tax assistant position was approved by City Council in September of 2024 and hoping to hire in our Progress Report Period Three, which is January 1 through March 31st. Next slide.
Can I ask a?
Yeah.
How does the group want to do this? Do you want to just stop it? Pause after each one and ask questions? Or do you want to wait until the end? I'm sorry, I didn't hear what you said.
Yeah, I thought that was a good idea.
Pause after each one?
Right.
Okay, questions, please?
I just wanted to, for clarity sakes, on the task force or the, I forget what you have it called here, of community members that can get involved with a financial health review team. Is that an official call tonight to the community? Or is that timeline to become and formally announced?
It'll be announced. We want to finish the FY '26 budget process since that is required to be presented at the first meeting in April. So probably at a meeting in April, we'll call and open that up once we have that budget done to start seeking applicants or interested parties to serve on that financial health review team.
Thank you.
Other questions? Go ahead, fire away, people. Anything? Okay, thank you. Go ahead.
So goal seven is to be responsible stewards of the environment by reducing or eliminating reliance on carbon and reducing activities that adversely impact climate change. There were 10 action items under this goal. Action item A is leveraging human experience and policy resources to establish five best practices for parks, facilities, trail, and green space management that are environmentally sustainable and responsive to emerging climate needs. So for Progress Report Two, it's 50% complete. During this period of time, city staff was working on updating the five-year Park Recreation Open Space and Greenway Plan, which ultimately was presented to council in January for approval. So just outside of this reporting period. We also used an MSU Spartan Engagement Ambassador to support staff to review resources from relevant trade associations, academic research, and creative policy solutions from other communities to develop a report describing at least five green infrastructure best practices. Action item B is evaluating facilities for opportunities to increase energy efficiency, reduce carbon footprint, and promote climate resiliency and incorporate findings into maintenance plans and the capital improvement plan. For this Progress Report period is 50% complete. Couple examples provided was the theater lighting upgrades at the Albert Ave White Performing Arts Theater. Energy-efficient LED lighting was installed. Boiler replacement at City Hall and Hannah Community Center with high-efficiency condensing units and currently exploring transitioning these boilers from gas to electric. Roof replacement and solar potential at City Hall and Hannah Community Center. New roof membranes will facilitate the future installation of rooftop solar panels. And then energy assessment and reduction. DPW is exploring energy reduction options and assessment of a DPW compound for solar. And our goal is to present information to the council at the June Discussion Only Meeting and then move from there to bid out for the installation of solar panel or solar field at DPW. The money is in the budget, so we want to bring that forward in June and get that process going. And then at the Water Resource Recovery Facility, WRF upgrades. The aeration and clarifier improvements, which you've been approving the financing process for through the last couple of meetings, will provide energy efficiency. Recommendations to promote climate resiliency and reduce carbon footprint were incorporated into the five-year park plan. Action item C is incorporating increased attention to invasive species management and repopulating lands with native pollinator-friendly planting while updating the five-year park plan and completing the stewardship master plan. For Progress Report Period Two, 100% complete. Invasive species management were identified and listed in the park inventory section of the five-year plan. Environmental stewardship program held 17 volunteer workdays, which totaled 540 hours of volunteer time to remove invasive species. Action item D, increased recycling participation by 4% over two years. For the period, it's 60% complete. Multi-family ordinance update. Green Code Study Committee will be evaluating opportunities to provide recycling at multi-family housing. And then the artificial intelligence contamination reduction pilot helped identify households that do not currently participate in recycling. Plan is to reach out to these households to better understand why. Next slide. Which is action item E is increased maintenance of city trees to increase health and longevity. For this Progress Report, it's 75% complete. Developed tree manuals and standard practices. Hired first certified arborist. Developed and initiated a citywide block pruning program. They increased quantity, size, and quality of new trees through contracted plantings, reviewing, updating tree protection ordinance, and developed a draft tree contractor registration program. Under action item AFT, pilot, low emission vehicles to set conditions for wider implementation. During this Progress Report, it's 100% complete. The city purchased and deployed two electric vehicles into the city's fleets. Action item G completed the, complete the city's comprehensive plan update. Late 2024 with a focus on housing, sustainability, and public health. Progress Report Period Two is 65% complete. Students, residents, stakeholders participated in various engagement activities, providing valuable insight and feedback. And a comprehensive plan committee is on track for projecting, for projected work in 2024 with plans to present the analysis of the work in early 2025. Next slide. Action item H is align the city's current property maintenance code with the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code. For this reporting period, it's 20% complete. Staff is currently working with the city attorney to identify, review, and understand the changes between the city's current 2006 edition of the International Property Maintenance Code and the 2018 International Property Maintenance Code. Staff started working on updating the 2018 code a few years ago. And then, of course, staff and attorneys changed, so that delayed the progress. Action item I is research and recommend funding options associated with stormwater management. For this reported period, it's 20, I mean, 40% complete. Staff and consultant creating wet weather resilience plan, which will include potential funding options. The wet weather resiliency plan is scheduled to be completed in 2026. Planning Commission, Commission on the Environment, reviewing stormwater design standards. They're applying for low-interest loans to the Drinking Water State Revolving Fund to cover stormwater improvements for the rivers/waters edge sewer district improvements and the Milford-Gunson sewer improvements that Willmarth and Woodmare relieve. So those projects have been presented to council, and those various funding options have been ongoing. Reviewing the Ann Arbor Stormwater Utility Ordinance to see how Ann Arbor did it. I know they currently have an authority or a utility where they charge. And so we're trying to mirror whether we can implement something like that here in East Lansing. The lobby legislators to permit creation of a stormwater utility.
Questions?
Actually, I got one more, and then I'll.
Oh, I'm sorry.
That's all right. Took a water break. So the next one is action item J. The last one, investigate feasibility of establishing a circular shuttle in downtown area. It's 10% complete. City staff started initial discussions with community partners, including SCADA, Planning and Development Director. But that's where we're at on that one. So that concludes those items under goal number seven.
Ms. Watson?
I was curious about J. How's the conversation going? Is it positive? Like, is it going in a good direction? Like, do you think we'll see it soon?
I'm sorry, for what?
For J, about the shuttle.
Landon is very excited about it. It is a top priority for him. His plate's full. But yes, the conversation with Pata, everybody likes. It's just trying to put everything into play.
Yeah, awesome.
And my final other question for now is, can you remind me, where did the 4% for item D? How did we land at 4% increase?
It's an interesting number, and it's low. It seems low, but maybe I'm wrong.
So I think it's a realistic number. So staff probably recommended that in their action items just to make it realistic because it's a very, and a staff-intents process to educate, encourage, and to facilitate expansion of recycling.
Okay, thank you.
Ms. Singh?
Yes, you know, over the last year, we've heard a lot of comments on the invasive species topic. And I just want to make sure I heard your update on that, that I know over five hundred volunteer hours to help remove invasive species from our parks. And then the planting of native pollinator-friendly planting is a part of the master plan moving forward?
That is correct.
Okay. And then I assume there's timelines attached to the master plan for those plantings?
That I don't know. I know it's within the five-year plan, but I don't know if they get into specific timelines for those plantings.
Okay, thank you.
Dr. Altman?
Thank you. Just a couple of questions about the Ann Arbor Stormwater Utility issue. So a stormwater utility is pretty important, possible funding option for covering some of the things that we have to cover now out of the general fund. Ann Arbor has a stormwater utility and has had one for a while. They were sued under Hedley. They prevailed in the Court of Appeals, I believe. And my understanding is that plaintiffs have now appealed to the Supreme Court, the Michigan Supreme Court. Is that correct?
They have asked for leave to the Supreme Court.
Leave to appeal. And so we could find out in the next few months, then, right, whether their stormwater utility is legal under bolt, if the Supreme Court declines to accept the case.
If they decline.
If they decline.
Yeah.
I think it's optimistic to think that would happen in sixty days, Eric. I think it's more likely six months, frankly. Maybe by June, but I doubt it.
Well, and it's also optimistic to think that they will decline, potentially. But who knows? I'm just trying to chart the course for trying to figure out when we will ultimately know whether we can move ahead locally with working on a stormwater utility. And it sounds like we're close, well, we may have an answer in the next year or so. I guess that was more of a comment than a question, but that was it.
Any other questions, Eric?
I've got a question.
Yes, or Mr. Meadows?
And item H, you know, this, the property maintenance code is being substantially changed through our recodification of our rental housing requirements. Is that included in this twenty percent that we see here?
No, so the rental housing ordinance where you were trying to create a chapter to make it clear what's required is not in this. That was strictly the International Property Maintenance Code itself.
And then, sort of a follow-up, as part of that, because we've moved things, we need to amend the section of the international property code that we're peeling language out of. Is that included in the twenty percent?
It is not.
Okay.
Okay, any other questions on this topic? And moving ahead, goal eight.
So goal eight is foster a thriving culture that celebrates diversity in the city. Sponsored events, activities, and programs by increasing the number of events and engagement of constituencies. Six action items under this. Action item A was continue to work with Human Rights Commission to host community sessions and events focused on equity outcomes and inclusion of marginalized communities. Increase participation in the HRC coffee and conversations by five percent indicated that this was, for this reporting period, seventy-five percent complete. Action item B was provide cultural education and capacity building for community members. East Lansing City Council and Boards and Commission facilitate ten hours of cultural education and capacity building for Boards and Commission. Host one community forum on social justice issue. For the progress report two, it's twenty percent complete with the Vernay Meyer presentation in June and submitted the draft City Council capacity building plan. And they're assembling more information during this quarter. Next slide, action item C, support city or East Lansing cultural celebrations and events and increase participation in cultural celebrations by five percent. For this reporting period, we had ninety percent completion. Recognize culturally significant holidays and months. Pride, Juneteenth, Hispanic Heritage, Indigenous Peoples' Day, Ramadan, and MLK Day of Celebration. Attendance at the Summer Solstice Jazz Festival increased by twenty-two percent from sixty-nine hundred in 2023 to eighty-four hundred in 2024. And that was based on the COBOL community research that provided attendance reports at those events. Item, action item D is identify and eliminating barriers to participation and engagement through community outreach. There's no update on progress report two. You know, I do want to point out Primetime Seniors Program conducted a survey about access and needs during this period of time. Action item E is evaluate and deploy methods to increase underrepresented groups' participation in city-funded programs and events. There's no progress percentage on this one, but a couple items I want to call out that meets this action item. Seniors Program continues to enhance its offering for the LGBTQIA+ older adults. They started a proud coffee hour. Summer Solstice Jazz Festival geolocation data revealed higher participation from BIPOC community members compared to the East Lansing population. Scholarships for fiscal year twenty-four, one hundred and thirty-nine scholarships totaling fifteen thousand four hundred and sixty-seven dollars were awarded to youth and adults for participation. The Arts Commission grant priorities, Arts Commission's FY twenty-five Cultural Arts Grants Priorities projects that promote and uplift artists' expressions and organizations specifically to BIPOC and LGBTQIA+ members. Community center accessibility. The Hannah Community Center Space Utilization Study, intentional engagement with users who navigate the space by various, with various disabilities, ensuring their needs and perspectives are considered. And the action item F is increase representation of our BIPOC LGBTQIA+ communities and faith-based organization with our boards and commissions. There is no percentage of completion or action items under item F. That concludes goal eight.
Okay, questions? Yes, sir?
Just a comment on action item E. I think that installing the new microphone system was a step toward accessibility for board and commission members and their audiences. I think that's been a real benefit. People still have to learn to use the mics, but they're much more usable than they were before, and I think it has helped. So I think that was an important step, actually.
Okay, other questions?
Just, why so little progress on B? I'm just, you know, we had twenty, whatever, twenty percent, you know, in the first quarter and then a big zero. And I think this is a very important thing for us to be promoting within the community, especially given the national opposition to providing real history for people to take a look at.
Which item are you?
B.
B. I don't have an answer other than I know there was plans and programs in place or continuing to be worked to be put in place for them.
Okay.
You have a question?
Yes, ma'am.
I was thinking the same, similar thoughts to Councilmember Meadows. Is anyone specifically running point on item B?
Yes, Elaine Hardy with the DEI office. So, I mean, I could tell you a lot we are doing with our workforce, but as it relates to community members and city council and boards and commission, that's where that limitation were with the items that we did that did more outreach to our boards and commissions and the public.
Thank you. And for the items that you said there's no percentages, I was reading that as infinity, and so I was happy. But then you were saying, but then you were saying we didn't set a percentage.
Where they have affinity, it's hard to quantify a percentage. That's why the infinity symbol was there, but it's not quantifiable as to these were the five things and we did three of the five.
Because I get concerned if it's, if we think it's not quantifiable, is it just words, then, on a piece of paper?
Well, I think what it did was shine light on the action items staff provided to try to be more measurable and relevant and specific. So that's something that we're going to work on as we build the next go-around or as we refine some of these over the next two quarters.
Thanks.
Yeah, let me just say, I, because I'm liaison with the seniors commission, I think we're maybe undercounting many of these things that are occurring in the seniors commission as a result of our new staff chair there. And my anecdotal observation is that commission and our employees have become much, much, much more cognizant of some of the issues surrounding underrepresented groups, various kinds of minorities, et cetera, et cetera, and have taken those things into account in terms of the operation of the Hannah Center, the offerings that are given. One example being that there's been an attempt to essentially analyze the building itself and make sure that it's in effect, I'm going to say barrier-free for sight-challenged people, et cetera, et cetera. So I just want to emphasize that that group seems to me to be doing a lot of work and is very cognizant of that general category. So I think we may have underrepresented some of that in your report.
Well, I did call that out there. Action item E, where that space utilization-
Right, I understand you did.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, proceed, please.
Okay, next slide. Goal number nine was to increase housing options and affordability by consistently, I mean, by constructing eleven hundred housing units over five years. There were two action items under this goal. Action item A was establishing a security deposit program for low to moderate-income East Lansing prospective renters. For this progress report, twenty-five percent completion. But I also want to point out that because this covered, you know, October, November, December, you approved that amendment to the CDBG plan at your meeting recently, so it's not being reflected in the completion rate here. City staff, of course, proposed the pilot successful leasing program using CDBG funds to provide first-month rent and security deposit assistance. So next round, you'll see it completed because you've approved that. Action item B was continue to investigate and develop programs to provide opportunities for homeownership for income-qualified household. Again, there's no exact percentage of completion. City staff have continued dialogue with MEDC, MISTDA Capital Area Housing Partnership, and HAD on finding, funding programs available to support homeownership opportunities. So that was goal number nine.
Okay, any questions? Mr. Meadows?
Not so much a question. You know, last year, or actually in 2023, the legislature gave us a tool for this. Actually, I think it may have been promoted largely by Senator Singh, which is to provide housing opportunities for income-qualified people through tax increment financing. And so I don't see that mentioned here. And I think that has to be something that staff looks at, and certainly we need to look at in terms of promoting income-qualified housing within our community. We've got a lot of opportunities to take advantage of this, and I think we need to get moving on it.
Okay, any other questions or discussion on this item? Oh, yes, go ahead, I'm sorry.
I, could you also ensure that staff is following up with MSU FCU outside of the government agencies with specific programs? They also have additional programs and could, there could be a package that they help represent and meet with folks. I'm making this up and not committing to them to anything, but there could be something creative there.
Okay, thank you.
Okay, moving on to goal ten, please.
Goal ten was to enhance the city's skyline, tree canopy, and utility reliability by relocating utilities underground. One action item. Action item A is develop a policy or pilot project, exploring and when financially feasible, relocating above-ground utilities. Progress report two had it at eighty percent complete. DPW has received and reviewed costs provided by Lansing Board of Water and Light. DPW needs to obtain and review costs for relocating other utilities such as AT&amp;T, Comcast, and fiber companies. That concludes item number ten.
Okay, any questions on goal ten?
I have a couple of comments.
Please.
So it sounds like we're going to hear an update from what staff has learned later this year. Is that, is that correct?
That's correct.
Okay. I, so I've been advocating this idea of trying to bury utilities for a while, not because I think it's going to happen in the near term, but because I think it's something that we want to plan for. And if we don't start talking about it, then it's never going to happen. So this is sort of a goal to collect data and investigate what the options are and plan for the future. But recently, increasingly, I've been thinking that we need to aim a little bit broader than this and maybe take the same approach to thinking about starting our own power A municipal power utility in the same vein as Board of Water and Light, except that I don't think we would plan to build our own plants. What we would basically be doing is establishing a regulatory authority that would buy wholesale power and then retail it to our, to our residents and perhaps beyond. There haven't been any new utilities in Michigan for some time. At the same time, Ann Arbor is thinking about it. And there are legal procedures in place for getting to that. It's time-consuming and it's expensive. But it has some important potential benefits. And so I'd like to gather information on just how, just what this would involve. And just to put a little bit of flesh on this, Board of Water and Light is a municipally-owned utility owned by Lansing. And they contribute twenty-five million dollars a year to the Lansing City budget in the form of a pilot move of taxes on the order of twenty-five million a year. Some of that twenty-five million a year is contributed by East Lansing ratepayers. So we are essentially subsidizing Lansing City Government, which is okay at some level, but I would like to keep that money here so that we can spend it on stuff in East Lansing. We could potentially, again, depending on the parameters and what we learn, that could be a source of revenue for the city. It could be a source of revenue for burning utilities, for improving our tree canopy, for buying sorts of, buying clean power as opposed to not clean power. So I think the route to some of our other strategic priorities goes through this possibility ultimately. So given that we are already sort of in data collection mode for this goal ten, I'd like to suggest that we maybe broaden our focus a little bit and do some data collection on- and do some data collection on what might be possible along, along these lines. So we're really potentially talking about two new utilities. One would be an electric utility and the other one would be a stormwater utility. But really, it's the appropriate kind of mechanism to fund the kinds of things we need to fund because it's a way to directly charge people for particular commodities. And for a city that's got a very limited general fund, that could be a real important direction to move in. So that is sort of my general comment on, on goal 10.
Okay, anything else?
Let me, let me just say that I think that we actually looked at this. So you may be able to go back to the maybe 2001, 2002 and, and see some discussion or report from city staff. At the time, the idea was to establish an electric utility within the city and then purchase our power from the Board of Water and Light and then wheel the cost savings to our customers, our citizens within the community, which would then lower their, their electric utility cost. I can't remember why we didn't proceed. I think there might have been a change in state statute that kind of stymied us at the time. But there might be some information that you can share with council that's from that time period.
Okay, thank you. Anything else?
I have a big picture behind.
Yes, ma'am.
So I'm curious whether, and I defer to the mayor whether we do this tonight or another time, Mr. Bellman. But I'm curious, one, overall, how you've seen this process and monitoring, you know, both from staff reporting and this collective strategic planning process. I'm curious about how everyone has felt it has gone. And then as we have alluded and as we're on the precipice of getting our, rolling up our sleeves on the budget is outside of some big ideas, we're also fiscally constrained moving forward with a lot of uncertainty in the landscape. Do we, should we be challenged to actually hone in on goals and priorities? Would that be beneficial to the staff? So those are some things I'm curious about recognizing. There's a lot on people's plate. But I also want to recognize, I think, the city has, has come a long way, at least in the last year, in terms of stabilizing and recruiting positions and hiring new staff that, on positions that have been open. So that is a huge undertaking that I think we are in a much better place today than we were a year ago. So it's definitely something to build upon.
Yeah, I appreciate the courtesy of deferring to me, but this is a discussion only meeting. So, I mean, I, I think you were kind of asking a question of the city manager there in terms of how he is. I think the question is how you've, how the city manager has seen this process in terms of goal setting and staff involvement. Is that, am I interpreting that question correctly?
They had feedback from staff collectively.
Yeah. Good, Robert, do you have an answer?
So just generally, you know, the process was a little clunky at first. I think now as staff is starting to settle in and the capacity, as you point out, is being rebuilt. We want to take a look at this, and of course, we'll have the opportunity at the beginning of '26 to do that with the idea that every two years, council would sit down and kind of reestablish. I think staff will kind of take a deeper look at the action items they're proposing. One, to make sure they're, could be supported by the budget. Two, that they're quantifiable. And three, they are limited in the scope so that they're not overwhelmed. Tracking this process has been somewhat challenging. And so putting a process in place where we have a good reporting system. I, I again want to, you know, shout out to my former assistant as well as Archie Foot for putting this together because I think the format that they've achieved does a nice job at summarizing it. And then also the backup that's provided by staff gives the ability to provide you specifics. But as you've pointed out, there's some areas that we are doing things, but we're not capturing it. So how do we capture that effectively and be able to report it out, not only to council but to the public?
Okay, anything else on this topic? Yes, sir.
Just briefly, I think, you know, the, the sort of reporting stuff is not cheap in terms of time and sort of data collection and so forth. But I think it is important and useful because it gives us, it gives us a, a log of the stuff that's happening. And I think we can look back on that log and be proud of it. And so I think it, it's a worthwhile investment of, of time. And I appreciate the time that everybody's put into organizing activities under these, these various goals.
Okay, can we now move on to item 6.2? Are we ready to go on 6.2? Discussion of a Proposed Ordinance 1546, An Amendment to the Zoning Ordinance Which Would Change the Process for Developers Seeking to Transfer Credits in Association with the Diverse Housing Requirement of Section 50-94. Mr. Bellman, are you going to handle this?
I'll take it, George. I asked for this to be on the agenda. It, it was prompted by the discussion of workforce housing, you know, down on the Bailey Lot. That would have been 120 units of low income qualified housing, which would mean that the developer would have 120 credits to sell to other developers within the downtown area that would avoid their having to build as part of their projects low to moderate income housing or owner occupied housing or any of the other categories that we identified in the, in the ordinance. What Tony put together, which I think we should talk about, is the idea that if we have provided a pilt, a payment in lieu of taxes or tax increment financing to the developer in any way, those would not be saleable. I think that that's a minor change to our objective to have at least 25% of the housing in the downtown area not market rental, but rather owner occupied or low to moderate income qualified or senior housing. And, you know, it, it really was in reaction to the fact that I was told by a developer who had, had had coffee with me that, gee, I'd like to buy all those credits. So I don't think we intended it to begin with, I know I didn't, to, to be a profit maker for somebody who builds housing or to avoid the 25% rule. And I think right now, a small tweak on this could make it more useful for us, especially since, as I mentioned earlier, now we have the opportunity to fund or to assist in funding low to moderate income housing in the downtown area through the use of tax increment financing. And we didn't have that opportunity previously. And that wasn't in existence when we passed the original language that we're looking at here. So I just brought it on so that it could be discussed. And if we want to go forward with something like this, then it'll be back on an agenda in the future and shipped over to planning to take a look at, and housing, so that we can get input from our two commissions that deal with this.
Okay, any discussion or questions on this? Mr. Bellman, I'm sorry.
So if I could, and if there's no concern about expanding a little bit of the discussion, so I understand what the change is. But some of the questions that have come up is we referenced that this 25% could also be single family owner development and condos. And so the question is, is there a formula that should be in place instead of having one to one when you're talking about a condo that, you know, you're looking at 25% of a 100 unit housing project, you know, that's 25 condos? Is that, or should there be a formula of four to one if it's a single family? You know, could we look at doing that in some of those changes to kind of drive more towards single family housing or other elements of this that we're trying to encourage? So I toss that out as.
Yeah, I don't have an answer for that, but I think those are the type of things we would expect to be discussed at the commission level for potential changes to whatever we ship out to them.
Okay, you're talking at the planning commission?
Planning commission for zoning change, but I think this would have to go to the housing commission too because it is critical to housing.
All right, thank you.
Well, for purpose of discussion, I, it's fine with me if we all want to move this ahead. I mean, we have a, we have a, a process in terms of considering ordinances and ordinance changes. And I have no problem with this being considered in terms of an ordinance change. And if Mr. Meadows wants to request the city attorney to, to write something up, which was now been done, I, yeah, if you want to have it go through the usual ordinance process, I don't have any objection to that. So, I mean, I, I don't know what else we have to discuss tonight, frankly. Mr. Almond?
So I think that, I think there's sort of two separate issues here. One is closing a loophole essentially in the ordinance that allowed a developer to double dip basically with these credits. And I, as far as I can tell, the language that, that's before us here seems to do that. Seems like a separate issue to try to tailor the incentives toward particular types of housing. It's also a useful issue, but I guess I would consider that to be a separate issue. And I wouldn't want to get the, closing the loophole tied up in sort of broader policy questions. I think we could maybe pursue those along separate tracks. So I guess if Mr. Meadows thinks that the changes here meet, meet the need of closing what I've been calling a loophole, then I guess I would suggest we move ahead with that.
Okay, is that where we're at? I tend to agree with Dr. Almond. I think it's kind of mixing a couple of different things together. And I'm not sure we really want to go to that route at this point, so.
Yeah, question?
Yes, ma'am.
So if a developer sells a portion of their percent, is it forever or is it, you know, like a one year thing? Or how, how does that work?
There's no time limit on it at this time.
So it would be, does that mean it would be forever ideally? Like, what if something happened with the developer, the one that sold it, where they need them back? They're just going to have to, it's gone, they gotta go on another way? Thank you. And where are we at with the places in place now at 25% for low to moderate income or 25% for 55 plus?
Well, the, you know, we have the senior housing in the downtown area that was one of our 25%. That, that is at this point the only compliance with this particular, the existing provisions. As I understand it anyway, maybe, maybe Robert knows of something else. But the, the Abbott, the 25% that the Abbott had to produce is the PK project. And I can't remember all the elements of the assignment of that to PK, but I thought there was actually the ability to avoid it being low to moderate income housing at some point. I would not be in support of that at all. In fact, I probably wouldn't have voted for the, the assignment. But I think that that's something that we got to keep an eye on for sure.
So just one property right now?
That's my understanding, yes.
Okay. And how do we know that they're keeping to what they agreed to at the senior place? What's it called? Newman's?
Well, I know that during the 20, maybe it was 2021, I know there was a change to the, to the deal there, but I don't think it related to the 25% rule. But at some point during that time period, the developer put people into those apartments that did not qualify.
Right.
And the council at that time let them stay until the lease was done. I can't remember exactly what was happening.
Yeah.
But that building at this point in time is, is compliant, as I understand it.
And how do we know? Like, how do we keep up with that?
That is a very good question. I don't know the answer, but I'm sure we can find an answer to that.
So I was having coffee or tea with, I think, the same person. And so my question is, why can't we ask developers to accept a certain percentage of section eight or voucher holders in order to meet the 25%? Because what seems to be happening is we've got people on the for-profit side that want to build, and the ask for 25% is an exploration into non-prof and, and things that they haven't, that they're not very familiar with. And so again, my question is, why can't we ask people to commit to accepting a certain percentage of section eight and or voucher holders to meet the 25%?
I think we can, actually. The, I don't, they usually propose whatever they're going to do. So they build a, a separate building or they could take a certain percentage of, let's just say that they, take the Abbott, let's say it's 120. They could take 30 of those and say that we're going to, we're going to offer these to low to moderate income individuals. And they could mix the population, so to speak. And there's nothing that prevents them from doing that. We could, we could even talk to them about that.
I have a different view of that. I mean, I, Mark's absolutely correct. There's nothing that prevents them from doing that. But I suspect that it doesn't work out economically because that's an effect, a lower rent rate. So I would suggest that if that's the path you want to take, Ms. Watson, that we initially take care of this little thing that people are calling a loophole. And then that would be part of a process of looking at the other parts of the ordinance as was suggested by the city manager. And so potentially putting a section eight category separately in and maybe giving an additional credit for that as opposed to the current credit situation. So that would be my suggestion. Anything else? Ms. Singh? Okay. So I think the city manager and the city attorney have a direction to go in terms of this specific amendment to the ordinance. And maybe at some point, Mr. City Manager, you can have a discussion with your planning people about what other kinds of ordinance changes might be, something we can take a look at to achieve the goals that you were talking about and the goal that Ms. Watson was talking about.
Sure, thank you.
Item 6.3, Presentation to the 2024 Downtown Parking System Report.
Good evening. I'm Alicia Wright in Planning Department. Landon Bartley wasn't able to be here this evening for the parking report in which section 50-593 of the city zoning ordinance requires an annual parking presentation to city council for approval. The report details the utilization of parking spaces in the district, specifically identifying the number of spaces available by location, price, and time of day. The staff report further expands on this presentation.
Hi, everybody. I'm Caleb Sherrill, the Downtown East Lansing Parking Administrator. We have a short, brief presentation here for you. It's only three slides long. The detailed 11-page report is in your packet for your review. The downtown parking system has 3,088 parking spaces, 85 of which are in garages, nine are in surface lots, and six are on the street. To the right, there's a small graph on this presentation that shows a dip in, in parking availability in 2019, 2020, 2021 area. And that was related to the pandemic and also construction of Albert Avenue parking garage. The graph below that just illustrates the breakup of parking type in the garages, surface lots, and on the street. The parking distribution in the graph below is across all garages. And our garages are named based on what street they're on. So that's how they're listed here is MAC Albert, Bailey Charles, Division and Grove. The map that's also available online on the city website for everyone illustrates the different types of parking that are available throughout downtown. The garages and the surface lots and permit parking, where ADA accessible parking is, where EV chargers are. And there's also free 15 and 30. parking is, where EV chargers are. And there's also free 15- and 30-minute spaces available throughout downtown that are from, ranging from Bailey Street to Valley Court Park, as long, as well as 15-minute free grace period in the garages, in the gated facilities downtown. Next slide, please. Twice a year, so semiannually, or biannually, we do counts, and those are conducted in the fall and spring, and those are utilization counts for the parking system. What this graph shows in the center, the large graph shows, or table shows, Albert Avenue Garage and Charles Garage being the highest average daily utilization at 59% for these, the most recent counts that were in the fall. For surface lot parking, CVS Lot 16, which is actually a lot owned by CVS that we operate via a revenue sharing arrangement, that one is our, is the highest utilized of the surface lots, and that's 75%. And then for on-street metered parking, section of Charles Street between Grand River and Albert is highest utilized at 73%. To the right, there's a couple of graphs that illustrate EV charger usage, with the peak being about 60% utilization of the eight chargers that we have throughout the parking system. So, that's for both counts of spring and fall. Next slide, please. So, average daily utilization of the entire parking system is about, is about, about, was about 60% in the fall, with peak utilization being for the fall was 62% Tuesday, which was on a Tuesday at, at around lunchtime, 12:30 PM. So, the counts are done purposefully, not on a football Saturday or a large event like art festival, because you don't necessarily plan your parking system for those outlier events. You want to know what your regular day is going to look like. And the last table there is monthly permit utilization in the gated facilities. So, that just shows a percentage of what our permit areas in the garages are sold at for the last counts. So, the fall range, the fall period range was between 42 and 70%. Overall, the counts show that there continues to be a surplus of available parking, and that's where I'll leave things. If you have any questions, I'm happy to try to answer them.
I, I, how do you do the count?
It's a, it's a labor-intensive effort. So, we have the whole parking team go around, and they, we have a clipboard, and you go and you count each area. For the garages, we have a count system. So, we can actually look in the computers and pull those numbers at each timeframe. So, I believe there's eight different timeframes?
Nine.
Nine different timeframes throughout the week. And we actually just added Sundays as well. We didn't use the staff on Sundays, now we do. We still don't charge on Sundays, but we keep the gates down so we can control our counts better. Everybody can have an entrance ticket. We have staff here to help with facility issues like elevator situations and anything that might come up.
Well, I, I don't understand why it's quote "labor-intensive" end quote, where we, when we have a system that I assume, at least in the gated lots, records everybody that comes in and goes out with regard to the ticket system and everything else. I mean, isn't that something we can look at at any given point in time?
You can. It's just an additional effort on top of daily duties that are already taking place. So, yeah, the gated system, the gated lots, you can look at the computers, but you do that nine different times every day and record those all for each of these different locations.
Okay. So, so you do do that?
For these, for the two counts each year.
Okay. And so, you, you have to actually go look at the gate, the computer?
No, no, no. I'm sorry. You, you pull numbers. You pull the counts from a particular time. So, we, you can look at what the count in that garage was for transient level, which are the lower levels, or permit areas, which are the upper levels.
Okay. So...
So, you're not like watching the camera to check the count. You're looking at the counts for that facility, which is digitally kept in the, in the computer system.
In a computer system that's located where?
In the parking office, in the control center.
Okay. So, at any given point in time for any day, we can access the number of people parking in the system where there is a gated system, correct?
Yes.
Okay.
And, yeah, there's live counts availability, web widget, as it's called, on the, on our website as well, so people can look and see how many spaces are available downtown. And we have digital displays on the front of each gated facility that show the counts, the number of spaces available in each facility.
Okay. And do we do a running record of that during the year?
A, a running record, like, like TrackIt, just for the two, just for the two biannual counts, is what we're tracking.
But we could, in theory, on any given day, find out how many people were using the gated parking lots, correct?
Yes.
Okay. I, I mean, is there any reason why we wouldn't want that data on a continuing basis?
For, for every day throughout the year?
Yes, sir.
No? More data's a good thing.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
I'm looking at the, the parking rates on your, on your report, and I thought that when we had a discussion of the budget last year, you were in the process of looking at implementing different rates for different lots to encourage usage. This is only three different rates, so I, I'm not sure whether I'm looking at what you're actually planning on doing or not.
So, yeah, the budget presentation's going to be separate. We actually have a parking task force meeting next week. So, our parking master plan that was completed in 2023 is going to recommend some rate adjustments for hourly parking. So, it recommends to increase the street hourly parking rate, and then our busier lots hourly parking rate. The permit rates are already adjusted based on demand. So, this is just recommending hourly adjustments. So, for example, it would be increasing Albert Garage, Grove Garage hourly rate, and street parking. You want your highest demand facilities to be your highest rate, helping to push users to your lower demand areas of town.
Okay. I think Mr. Meadows questioned, you correct me if I'm wrong.
Sorry.
I think he was asking, have you already implemented some of those changes? Because I thought he was referring to a prior meeting when that was discussed.
Yeah, because it's for the budget meeting last year.
I was wondering whether we were already in this process.
Thank you, yeah.
So, yeah, we're going to talk to our parking task force next week, and we are planning those for this budget cycle.
Okay.
Because of staffing changes last budget cycle, we chose not to try that at that time, so.
And the, the highest rate we have here is the dollar per half hour, at least shown on here.
Yep.
And Bailey, the Bailey surface lot is included there, even though it's kind of far out. What, do we have a dollar per hour there because of the cost of leasing the two-thirds of that lot? I mean, in order to make a, to break even on that lot, do we have to have a higher price there?
Surface lots are usually more demand, but I, I don't, I don't believe that the leasing part was, was a factor there.
Okay.
It's that it's a higher demand facility like Grove and Albert.
Okay. That's it. Yes, ma'am.
Just connecting to a couple of things I've heard in the community. One is seniors tend to like those surface lots over parking garages, which I'm sure is not news to anyone around here, which gets to your demand piece. Two is folks at People's Church on the west side of town feel like there's some real parking constraints. I don't know if that's any type of feedback or data-driven piece you can delineate from your...
People's Church has, I believe it's an 80-space parking lot directly adjacent to the, to their, to their church. There's also Valley Court parking. Along Valley Court, there's 50 spaces that are, that are hourly parking, that are our most available, some of our most available parking throughout the week. Now, Sundays are a different story, yes, because of Farmer's Market, demand for Farmer's Market, and it's also church.
Yep.
So, that, that is a real issue that does take place on Sundays.
Okay. So, that is something that has been, feedback that we've received in terms of demand on Sundays. And then the last thing I want to just, because I think I learned something, I mean, I learned many things, but we can actually go to your website and see what, how many spaces are available before we come downtown. That's so helpful.
Yeah. Carrie actually tries to push that out quite a bit on social media. It's a pretty neat thing. We implemented several years ago that live parking availability for, for the downtown parking system, for the gated facilities. You can check that at any point. And it shows a map of which facility, where it's at, and how many spaces are available.
Sweet. Thanks.
And the Graduate Hotel rents spaces from us in the lot behind People's Church and on the Valley Court Circle, correct?
Not on Valley Court Circle. There's a, the parking agreement with Graduate is for 10 spaces in Lot 8, which is Albert Avenue Lot 8, which is directly across the street from People's Church. And there are 30 spaces in City Hall West, Lot 15, across from, across from City Hall. And then beyond that, they can use the validation program, our downtown validation 50% discount program, which is available to any downtown business, and that's first comes, first served for permits. So, they buy some permits in other facilities as well.
And, which means that they can park on the Valley Court Circle, correct?
At the west end of Valley Court, there are permit spaces that are first come, first served, but not in the 50 hourly spaces.
Okay. And how much are we charging the Graduate Hotel?
They pay, pay full rate for the, for the facilities that they have the parking agreement in.
Full rate, full permit rate?
Full permit rate, yeah, which is, which is a discounted monthly rate, all permit rates are.
Okay. Thank you. Other questions? Ms. Watson?
I was wondering, do you ever read about other communities who figured out a way to offer parking rates at discounted rates, and it increased the parking, and at the end of the day, it increased the amount of money, the revenue?
So, yeah, we actually implemented recently the, within the last two years, I believe, we did at the discount monthly multi-use permit, sorry, stumbled on the words there, multi-use permit validations. So, you can get $50 worth of a multi-use validation for $25, or $100 for $50. So, we implemented that within the last few years, and we do, it is a popular, popular item, a product that we sell. We also have the 50% discount for, for businesses downtown for the validation program and our monthly discount permits. They're, they're actually called a discount monthly parking permit. Those are already a discount off of the hourly rate. Does that increase our utilization of the facilities? I'd like to think so, but I, I don't know. We know that they're gaining popularity, but it doesn't necessarily show us, once we implemented this, we have this big blast off of utilization. We are tracking in a more positive direction in general in the parking system, but I couldn't necessarily nail it to those products.
Okay. Thank you.
Yep.
Dr. Almond, did you have something?
Yeah, a couple of questions. So, just to build off that last question, the last parking task force meeting, if my memory serves, we kicked around the idea of, of seasonal changes in parking rates to try to get more people down in the summer. And I'm guessing that may be on the agenda for the...
Yep. Yeah, it sure is. Yeah. So, the, the information we gathered, we were going to push for Division Garage, which is our most underutilized parking garage, that's the multicolor parking garage, being four hours free for the summer months. So, like, mid-May to mid-August, the cost to that is between $18,000 and $20,000. Where does that money come from? Does it just, is it just still on the backs of the parking fund to keep giving away parking, or do you ask someone, a group like the DDA to fund something like that? I don't know. That's up for discussion, and that is one of the items for, on the agenda for parking task force next week.
Another question is, so the utilization rate is now sort of 55, 60% if I'm looking at the average utilization graph. It seems like, you know, you mentioned that there's still capacity, but it looks like we're using a lot of spaces still at the same time. So, it seems like we're actually in a pretty good place where we still have some headroom, but we've got enough utilization to generate the income we need to sort of justify having build a lot of parking in the first place.
Yeah. So, it's more utilized at the west end of downtown, and less utilized in general at the east end of downtown. That's why we're making some of those rate adjustments. And that is, the reality is, you want to operate a parking system between 85 and, and low 90s percentage. You don't want, yeah, you don't necessarily want to operate at a, at a 59, you know, percent occupancy. So, that's where we're, that's where my head is at, trying to get to for operating a parking system. But getting people to realize they're in a downtown, and you don't necessarily get to park right outside of where you want to be, is another story. That, that's not always something that, that folks are accepting of, so.
And then, I guess my last comment is, I think this report's really clear and helpful and nicely produced, so.
Mr. Meadows, you had something?
No, I just agree with what you said.
What he said? Okay. Any other questions for staff here? Thank you. Very nice presentation. Thank you very much for coming.
Thank you.
Item 6.4, Discussion on the Process the City Council Wants to Use in Evaluating the City Attorney Responses to the Request for Proposal for City Attorney Services. Mr. Bellman?
So, I'm bringing this back because the city council, your February 11th discussion-only meeting finalized the RFP. It was issued on February 20th with the direct mailing and emailing to the attorneys listed in the RFP and posted to the city's website. The tentative milestones or schedule is date and time proposals are due are March 20th, 2025, 4:00 PM. And then the review of the proposals, the 21st to the April 1st, which all the proposals would be provided to council, either electronically or in writing, for you to review. The idea or recommendation I have is that you list your top five and submit those to the mayor, let him compile it. And from that, the top three of those five would be who you would interview on April 8th, which is a discussion-only meeting with the approval of contract or contracts on April 15th.
Okay. Discussion?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
So, are you, are you saying list your top five or like a rank choice? The top five should be the order of your picks. I'm, I'm more in, in favor of the rank choice process, but, but which were you saying?
Yeah. So, you would rank your top five in your ranking. So, your first choice would be number one down. And then those that have, the most that show up as one, two, and three would be the ones that would be brought forward for interviews.
Yes, sir.
So, how are we handling something like Labor Council, which historically, Labor Council is something that we've had handled by a specialty law firm? Is that included in this pool? Is that, does that soak up one of our five, or are we handling that separately?
I guess my gut reaction on that is that the simplest thing to do would be include that in your five. But I'm not married to five either. I mean, you could, you know...
I'm, I'm less concerned about the five than I am about the three. So, if we, right, if we include Labor Council as, as one, then we have two other slots that we're interviewing, and maybe that's for what, what I'll call, so that, that the core, the core services. And maybe we want more than that.
Yeah. I, it doesn't seem to me like a, it, I mean, it's really a function of what the council wants to do and how it wants to do it. But, you know, it doesn't seem to me to be on the scope of rationality to interview five. So, you know, so in other words, people would rank five. It's probably, although we discovered earlier that the rankings come out a lot the same, but you never know. But, so, you know, then I pitch you the five that I see, and we could interview five. I mean, I, I don't know. If that, I, I don't know if I'm sort of responding. I get what you're talking about, and I don't know if I'm effectively responding to it.
Well, I think that's one way to respond to that, is just to expand that, go from three to that five. But if anybody else has thoughts about that number or that particular issue, I would be interested in it.
And I think you could designate, when you list your five, you could designate one, you know, for labor or something else.
But then how would you factor that into your rankings if we're going to do rank choice? It, it seems like we're dealing, dealing with, potentially dealing with a couple of separate bins here.
I, I agree with you. I'm, I'm not seeing this as any part of Labor Council. I didn't see the RFP as that. I think when I look at the scope of services, it is more in the nature of our traditional city attorney services provided to the community. And frankly, I have zero issue with the Labor Council. issue with the labor council we have right now, so I, I don't have any, I didn't think that that was even on the block. Um, and if you look at the cost proposal provision, it talks about appellate, Michigan Circuit, federal, you know, I realize that labor is somewhere in there, but labor negotiation, it says, I guess that number eleven is labor relations personnel, so I guess it is in here as a potential, but I wasn't thinking that, that we really were looking at that at this point in time. So I, I'm, I'm more interested in concentrating on the city attorney services that are sort of traditional, we also traditionally had separate council for, for labor, and I'd rather see us check that out separately anyway, that's just my view, I realize. Um, but I don't, I don't have a problem with us culling through all the applications or proposals, and coming up with a number that we're supposed to refer, but, um, you know, one, one issue, uh, that I would have is just the idea that I'm basing it, basing my decision only on a proposal in writing that has been provided to me, and not had an opportunity, say, for number seven on my list, to actually interact with them to see, um, you know, whether I think that they would be a good fit for us. So, and, I'm not sure about the, the way that we're doing it right now, traditionally, or in the past, we've done it other ways. I think, uh, I think I remember Sam and I sitting as two people who called through and made recommendations, uh, you know, as we've assigned it to specific council members to go through and then make recommendations to the rest of the council on various occasions. I like the idea that has been proposed by Robert, that we all go through all of them, and then come up with our own list, and then George puts that together, but I feel like we need to also have in that mix, a sit-down of all of us, in a closed session, to go through that five and decide who we're gonna be offering, uh, a, uh, interview to, so. And I don't think that was mentioned, so, I don't know if that was what you contemplated or not, or what Robert contemplated.
I see your hand up, Robert.
Go ahead, Rob.
So I guess, you know, I suggested the three and five, quite frankly, it all depends on how many responses we get.
Sure.
And so that number may, uh, be impacted by the number of responses, so I just tossed that out to facilitate conversation, but we may have to come back depending on the number of responses and say, it's seven, I mean, you mentioned labor council, but there's bond councils in here, too, so you have almost three types of services that are being proposed. And I don't know if all firms do all of those specialties.
Um, it's not a requirement that the, who, the law firms that submit are gonna do both, um, are gonna also do prosecution.
Correct.
What is the term for not prosecution? It's not labor?
Not prosecution.
Not just not prosecution? Do you call it, um...
Not prosecution.
Okay, right.
You got it right.
And, um, how often is it that, I mean, it would be a, it would have to then be a large firm, if the consideration was, do they offer both prosecution and non-prosecution? But this way, um, we might get someone that just specializes in criminal law, is that right?
Correct.
All right, and so then are we saying we're lumping those two together? Our prosecutor would not be separate from the five, or there, there would be two lists?
Whatever the council decides, but this is what I anticipate based on the most recent experience, and, Mr. Meadows, I, we intentionally put in an RFP for all of the legal services, and made it very specific that firms could bid on a portion of it. So in any event, I assume, of course, we never know how many will have come in, that's the first thing, but I assume we'll have a number of what I'll call general, um, general council firms that'll probably be willing to handle all of our needs, that actually happened the last time we did this, with maybe the exception of bond council, 'cause I don't think we even thought about doing an RFP on bond council, and I think we may have, um, some smaller firms that will bid on one portion of another, i.e. labor or prosecution. So, I, I really don't care, folks, um, and I, I'm just trying to do a problem-solving thing here, so I guess you could read through them all, and you could make a list of general firms, and you could make a list of labor, and you could ma, make a list of prosecution, if that's the way the bids come in, and I'll observe that categorization, and, you know, and come back to you with a list, and then we can have a discussion about how many we wanna interview and things like that, so.
I, I think, sorry, no.
Go ahead.
I, I think that that's, so I'm fine remaining flexible until we see what bids come in.
And, and just let me say that, and based on my comments, you know, I know that I'd, I'd like to see, you know, something separate, but I, do we feel that this language says they may bid on all or some of these tasks? Because if that's the case, then I'm okay with the bond council, because we'll get some, some bids from people who specialize in that, and that's really all they do, and the same thing is true for labor council, which is a very specific, uh, type of practice that hardly anybody does anything but that, once they become a bond council.
The answer to your first question is, yes, I believe the language covers all of those possibilities, and as a matter of fact, I've already gotten at least one phone, phone call from a local firm, asking that specific question, steering them right back to the RFP, at which point they said, oh, yeah, it's right there. So, yeah, I think it is subscribed, I think it is described, so.
Yeah, specifically on bottom of page sixteen, it says, firms may submit a proposal for all municipal services, or any portion of the services enumerated under scope of services.
Yeah, I missed that, so that's good, I'm good with it.
Um, this is actually really helpful for me, I think, as the newest person here, and in, I may, I think it makes sense, the process, as you laid it out, Robert, um, for us to move forward, and then we'll learn a lot from the proposals, interviews, and then there's a way to ensure that we can create the team that will best serve the city, and then I know, like, even, I know we've reflected a lot on the labor piece and what has happened in the past, but I know a number of our contracts are being negotiated this year, and how labor-intensive is that for the coming year, um, so I'm just kind of flagging that, and then, which leads me to my final point, which would be helpful, the, uh, financial impact that you have in here, Robert, I think is probably, we probably need to build that out a little bit, um, one, so we have an understanding, it's obviously, it feels like it's been a pretty, um, intense legal, um...
Every year is an intense legal year.
Is it? You've been talking to a lot of these firms that are putting proposals together, but, um, my point is, if we could get more of a baseline, or an average for a set of services, or at least by year, what we've seen, and then recognizing there's a collective fee, or a collective legal service fee versus what we've just articulated through, um, the labor, prosecution, and, um, general contract, I'm calling it a general consultant contract, almost in my mind is what general legal services, um, as provided.
Okay. Do we have enough discussion and input to go forward?
So, so my overall sense is we're all gonna read all the proposals, right? We're gonna send ranked lists to the mayor, that may be categorized if we see it, that is being appropriate, and then the mayor will do something and come back to us.
I'll, I will do my divine in, and I'll do the best I can for you all, and...
This worked really good for the charter commission.
And, and we'll see what happens, and if it doesn't, if it isn't satisfactory to you all, then we'll...
We'll tell you.
And you will...
And I, I don't think anybody at this table will be hesitant about telling me that I did something wrong, so.
And then we will have, uh, a closed session to go over the list that you put together, or is that it?
If necessary, yeah, I'm, I'm not sure that's really gonna be necessary, but yeah, sure.
Are we, are we allowed to have a closed session?
I don't know, that's another question.
Mr. Bellman's weighing in.
Go ahead, Mr. Bellman.
I, I don't believe you can, because it's not, uh, item subject to exemption of, under the open meetings that...
Wouldn't this be a personnel issue?
No, because you're contract, looking for legal services, so.
Got it, okay.
Okay, folks, are we ready to move on?
Uh, I do have one more question.
Yes, ma'am.
The April eighth date, is that a council meeting date, or is that a separate, is that like a Tuesday?
That is a council meeting.
That's a council meeting?
It's a discussion-only meeting day.
All right, 'cause I think we'll definitely have interviews, but, but, okay.
Okay.
That's a nice question.
Um, moving on, do we have a motion relative to a closed session?
I have a motion, a move that we enter closed session pursuant to MCL fifteen dot two-six-eight sub one sub H, to discuss an attorney-client privileged memorandum that is exempt from disclosure to, uh, pursuant to MCL fifteen dot two-four-three sub one sub G.
Do we have a second?
Second.
Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Altman?
Yes.
Councilmember Meadows?
Yes.
Councilmember Watson?
Yes.
Mayor Pro Tim Singh?
Yes.
Mayor Brookover?
Yes, we're gonna adjourn to closed session. Thank you, staff, for coming tonight, thank you ELI for sitting through our meeting, even though you could watch it at home with your chips and your Coca-Cola, and appreciate your presence.
Yeah. I know. You're welcome.[1296.65]
Okay, do we have a motion?
I hope I make it.
I move to return to open session.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Do we have another motion?
Move to adjourn.
Is there a second?
Second.
All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
All those opposed, motion passes unanimously. Thank you, thanks folks for coming.